No, thanks for asking.
Manistee City Council Meeting for Tuesday, February 21, 2017, 7:00 PM is now called to order. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, please take roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Whitliff?
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Here.
City Manager?
Here.
City Attorney?
Here.
DPW Director?
Here.
Public Safety Director?
Here.
Planning and zoning Administrator?
Here.
And City Engineer?
Here.
Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. Are there any citizen comment for agenda-related items? State your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Brandon David from 321 Second Avenue. I am applying for the Historic Commission this evening and hope that I gain some knowledge from that. I am currently the General Manager at the Historic Vogue Theater of Manistee. I've been working there since May and have been a resident of Manistee since December of 2016. I come from an art background and took some architecture classes in college. I graduated from Columbia College in Chicago in 2006 with a degree in fine arts.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments on agenda-related items? If not, we'll move on to consent agenda. Consent, agenda items marked with an asterisk are on a consent agenda for consideration by the and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during a regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, notifications regarding next work session, consideration of the American Cancer Society Relay for Life of Manistee County. At this time, council could take action to approve consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Beaton, second by Mayor Protem Zalinski. Is there any discussion? Please take roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitliff?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of City Council adoption of 2017 through 2018-19 City of Manistee Strategic Plan. City Council and the Alliance for Economic Success have completed updates for the City of Manistee Strategic Plan. Council is being requested to review and adopt the 2017 through 2018-19 Strategic Plan. At this time, council could take action to adopt the 2017 through 2018-19 Strategic Plan for the City of Manistee.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, second by Councilmember Whitliff. Is there any discussion?
I had a question. We just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that in our discussions that we've had is that we're going to make people responsible of keeping these goals going and, yeah.
So, good evening, I'm Tamara Bezinko from the Alliance for Economic Success. That's a great question. I had put in the plan, the first time that we've been doing strategic planning together, a implementation grid. And, you know, it was up to you guys if you wanted to do that, we can do that next year. You know, every year you build a little bit, something new into the plan and maybe this year it's good to go as it is and we'll get some more direction from that on what AES specifically wants done and then I'm sure he'll be working with staff on what you guys would like them to work on.
Yeah, my intent is to build on what we did last year when I met with AES and we went through what I thought was appropriate portions of the council's strategic plan and assigned those to AES. And I'm going to drill down a little farther and take a look at what we can assign to various staff members so we have some accountability and make sure we're working towards those goals.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we have the accountability there.
As long as the content is set, you guys are happy with the content, you know, the rest of it's really administrative in a certain sense.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And then another question I had, part of the goals is to take care of the blight issues in the city. And I know our blight officer has taken a different position and we are hiring another one. Are we having him as the blight? And this is more directed to Chief Bachman.
I apologize, councilperson, my hearing agent, your attorney, manager to get off.
You ask me that again, please.
Yeah, the current blight officer that we have?
Yes.
He's taking another position somewhere else.
Yes.
And then we're hiring another officer. Are we having him as the blight officer?
The new officer will not be that blight officer. Officer Van Sickleton will take over blight for us.
Okay.
He's a seasoned police officer, both here and in another department before he came with us. He's already picking up the slack on there.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Please take roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitliff?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Oh, thank you.
Consideration of Local Revenue Sharing Board Grant Applications. The Local Revenue Sharing Board, LRSB, distributes 2% of the Little River Casino Revenue. Deadlines for the 2017 psycho application is Friday, March 3, 2017, at 5:00 PM. City staff has prepared two grant applications for submission to the Local Revenue Sharing Board. The agenda item will include two separate motions, one for each grant application. At this time, council could take action to authorize the submission of a grant application to the Local Revenue Sharing Board for four police vehicle radar units in the amount of $8,940.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, second by Councilmember Whitliff. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. On the police units, or the radar, I'm sorry, not the police unit. I noticed there are two antennas, does that give us the capability of both directions?
Yes, sir. Moving radar both directions.
Okay, so...
Gaining onus and closing speed. And stationary radar both directions, yes.
Okay, thanks, that's a great...
You bet.
It's my understanding that these four units are replacement, upgrade to the existing radar systems that we have in four vehicles? Is that correct or not? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The four radar units?
Yes.
Are these replacements of older units in our vehicles?
We have, we've had units, we have, we have, yes. As a short answer to your ask, we've had to put money into repairs of current units, Dave, and we've had two that have been completely overhauled. So, in the current condition, they will work, but they have been failing. I expect the other two to fail probably right behind them.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the police radar? Please take roll.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitliff?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. At this time, council could take action to authorize the submission of a grant application to the Local Revenue Sharing Board for a stair chair, any vacuum splint set in the amount of $4,000.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, second by Councilmember Cooper. Is there any discussion?
I know that there's a, I have, just want to make a comment. I know that there are people in the City of Manistee who do call regularly for a lift assist and I'm just wondering how wide the chair is because I know there's some really narrow stairways.
The stair chair is not intended as a lift assist device. The stair chair is to get a person out of a place we can't get her caught into and the stair chair is about this wide.
Okay.
It has tracks on it, it has wheels, it has handles so firefighter or paramedic can hold it back and it can actually lower it down. That's a step with track like a tank, it flips out.
Mm-hmm.
To carry it down. But we don't use that for lift assist. Typically, lift assist, we have some other device where we can just pick a person up and send it back in a chair. But the stair chair takes them from maybe this floor if we can't get it caught upstairs, down the steps where animals would get to.
Yeah, and that's more what I was talking about.
We use it a lot.
Especially one family in general that I know that calls a lot.
We have something, I think, that the Army made about 1970 that looks like, it's like an origami deal to unfold it and it's just, it's just old and aluminum tube, so it needs to be replaced.
The new unit's a much higher weight capacity also, isn't it, Chief?
I believe that unit will carry about 400 pounds, yes. And the vacuum mattress is a device to stabilize long bones, both legs, arms, if they have individual fractures, but also we use it to stabilize hip fractures. So, it's like if you envision a mat you might lay on a water with, if you went in a pool, you would lay that on the ground, we put the patient on, it's full of like those pellets and we actually suck the air out of it and it compresses around the patient and holds them, locks them tight so their hip is stabilized. We can move them without injuring them further or injuring their hip or a long bone. So, it has individual arm and leg splints in the package plus a long piece for hip and back injuries. That's actually a great tool. We have, we do not have that out of our second ambulance either, so it's a nice piece of equipment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the lift? Please take roll.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitliff?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of An easement, Manistee Housing Commission for property at 273 Sixth Avenue. The City of Manistee maintains and operates storm and sanitary sewer facilities within censured terrace property at 273 Sixth Avenue. Some of these facilities predate the current building, which several are new as a result of the Sixth Avenue pump station and Fourth Main replacement project. The proposed easement document is intended to address all city utilities at 273 Sixth Street. The grant of easement has been prepared by the city attorney. At this time, council could take action to approve the grant of easement between the City of Manistee and Manistee Housing Commission for existing city storm and sanitary sewer facilities located across the censured terrace property at 273 Sixth Avenue and further authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, a second by Councilmember Whitliff. Is there any discussion?
Please take roll.
Councilmember Whitliff?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Consideration of Amending Chapter 1489, Low or Moderate Income Housing Ordinance. Third Coast Development is moving forward on its plans for redevelopment of the former Olsen's property. In preliminary discussions with city staff, Third Coast Development has indicated the desire to secure a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot agreement from the city for the residential unit component of the building. City Ordinance 1489 mandates that a pilot must be equal to 10% of annual shelter rents and there is no mechanism for the city to accept a lower pilot. Ordinance language also restricts the pilot terms to 35 years. City staff recommends that this ordinance be amended. At this time, council could take action to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance amendment for Chapter 1489 that changes the wording from an amount equal to 10% to an amount up to 10% and change or the 35-year to or the 50th year for a first reading at the March 7, 2017 council meeting.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it, get it going.
I have a motion by Councilmember Whitliff, I have a second by Councilmember Goodspeed. Is there discussion on this motion?
What?
Go ahead.
What do you mean by up to 10%?
You can, you can go theoretically with that change, it gives you the option to negotiate something less than 10, but you can still go up to 10. Right now, we have, the city has no room for negotiation. You know, if somebody came in with a good project that you felt was a good project that couldn't afford a 10% pilot, the way the ordinance is written, you couldn't accept anything less than 10%. And so, I'm just saying that this, I'm suggesting this that there, because number one, Third Coast is probably going to come in something around 4% pilot because they've run the numbers. And again, this isn't their request for a pilot, it's just what needs to happen if they're going to move forward with a pilot. They run the numbers and they can't afford a 10% pilot, the numbers don't work, wouldn't allow for financing, it just, the project would not happen and they can't afford to pay the normal property tax. So, that would rule out that entire project. And so, this just gives the council, if they want it, some latitude to accept something less than 10. Not saying you have to, but it gives you the latitude if you think the project warrants it. That's all it is.
Have they already said that they can't afford it or is it just something that we...
That's the preliminary indications based on the numbers that we've seen so far. But again, this isn't, this isn't their application. This is just if, if the council is interested in changing the wording on the ordinance, that at least gives them an opportunity to present a request to council at 4%. Absent that, they couldn't and the project would go away.
Several months ago, we had a pretty informative presentation on a pilot program. And if my memory serves me correct on that, pilot is a substantial advantage over property taxes. As a matter of fact, in some of the examples that were shown, a 10% pilot that would cover service fees that would ordinarily be picked up in the property tax process would be about 20% of what a normal property tax assessment would be on a property. Substantial savings. And you're saying that we can't, can't even, and I understand that the 10% was because of, I think that dates back to the Reese Park Village project?
Yeah, I don't know what, what it goes back to.
Okay. You know, I get concerned when we look at pilots versus property tax. The seven out of the last eight years, according to our most recent budget, we've had a negative value for property tax revenue. And in our budget process, we make statements in there about not being able to afford the services that we have going forward without some increases in revenue. And yet, we turn around and look at giving up 80-plus percent of tax revenue on a development for up to 50 years. And I wonder, are we shooting ourselves in the foot here or is this a development that is so critical to the city that we need to make these concessions because the rest of the taxpayers that are out there paying taxes on their property now are kind of making the difference up for this development?
Well, and that's a philosophical discussion that council will have to have, but again, this is just allowing the city the opportunity to look at a pilot that is 10 or less. That's all it is. Now, if some, if a developer comes in front of the council and says, "I want a 6% pilot" and the council said, "We're not going to get it," do you have that, do you have that right?
When we talk about pilots, is it, is it possible to put language in an ordinance that would allow us to assess a pilot percentage up to the amount of property tax as opposed to a 10% or a 15% or a 4% or any arbitrary limit?
I don't think we can and I would defer to the city attorney because I think the statute that's pretty clear on the statute wording is that you either pay the property tax or a pilot up to 10%.
I think that's correct. What many cities do though, in that circumstance, to make up for the cost of city services that are being provided to the property that aren't being covered by the pilot is to enter into a municipal services agreement that will hopefully cover at least some, if not all, of those types of costs.
Why change it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Why change it to 50 years, though? That seems like that's a, I mean, a pretty long time.
Well, that's up to and that's consistent with the state statute. That's all the reason for that. It's just, this is to bring us in compliance with the state statute, what's allowed. It's not saying that you have to go to 50. It means you could go to 50.
Right, but wouldn't any developer would be like, "Oh, I'm going to take the 50 years and the 4%"? Like that would...
Well, they can request that and council can say, "No."
So, if he comes up, the developer comes and says, "Okay, I want 4% and 50 years," we can still say, "No." This current one.
Right.
Isn't the term of the pilot tied to the terminal loan? By state statute?
Not the way that'd be the statute.
So, what we're doing here is a negotiation tool?
Exactly. That's all it is. There's, there's nothing, right now, the way it stands, you have one option. You can only accept the 10%, that's it. So, even if you had a project that you really thought was valuable for the city and the numbers were run and the most a developer could afford was a 6% pilot, you can't allow that. So, all I'm suggesting is that it gives you some latitude, some flexibility, opens up a dialogue for negotiations and lets you at least consider projects that may not be able to afford a 10% pilot. That's all it is. It's not handcuffing you to anything. You're not, you're not obligated to take anything. There's nothing that says you have to grant a pilot request.
You know, I think it would be interesting, and I know I asked, I asked before, Cherry Hills just expired on their pilot and are now back on the tax rolls. We've got Reese Park Village is under a pilot. As I understand, Reese Park Village was never assessed as a property for property tax value because it was under a pilot, so we really don't know what the taxes would have been in lieu of what we've received in the 10% pilot. Knowing those numbers, I think, would really be helpful when we look at some of these projects in the future to see what concessions the city's making because I think in some instances, we're looking at millions of dollars of revenue. And again, I don't, don't begrudge any that opportunity to serve seniors and council on aging, there's certainly times when you want to do a project and make some concessions because it's good for the community. But I also look at our own community, we're the City of Manistee in a county and I don't see that there's any, any other municipality within the county that has subsidized housing or pilot projects and is rendering the revenue that we are in this light. I'm just concerned about the numbers. And I understand this is a planning tool and it gives us flexibilities, but I'd like to know for sure that the 10% limit would be the limit. If we could go higher to that than, than 10%, then, but I would like an ordinance that would allow us to go to the maximum possible so we could negotiate, you know, in, in the best range possible.
And again, it's my understanding that 10% is the maximum. Yeah. And we can certainly give you, give council the property tax on the full value of a project, one that's, you know, requesting a pilot, but, you know, I'm pretty comfortable in saying that we would never see those dollars because if they can't afford to pay the property taxes, they're not going to build the, build the project. So, you know, then it comes down to, do you want to give a pilot to a worthy project and at least get something and provide a project to the community? I mean, that's what it comes down to. But this just gives you an option to consider something less than 10 if you so choose.
I, I don't, I just received this on Thursday, so I'm trying, I don't feel, I've had enough time to really research this in the best interest of the taxpayer. I know there are other possibilities. We could have a, under the State Housing Development Authority Act, we could pass an ordinance and it says a municipality by ordinance may establish or change by any amount it chooses as service charges to be paid in lieu of taxes by all or any class of housing project exempt from taxation under this act. However, this service charge shall not exceed the taxes that would be paid but for this act. What I'm, what I'm trying to say is I think that I'm not really against the changing of it. What I'm against is I don't think we've gone far enough to protect the taxpayer at this point. I also did some research online and found an ELMA, which is about 3,000 more in population than we are. They have a pilot policy where they have set it up and they actually quote the state law, the first paragraph of their policy. And they have a policy on how they will approve and what will be approved for pilots and so on, like a policy would. I need to make sure in my mind that the taxpayer is protected. I also made a call to a city today who I know has a senior housing project and everybody knows that I'm associated with Claire, so I called Claire and I talked with their finance director. They have a 4% payment in lieu of taxes. And I asked him straight out, I says, "Does this cover, does this cover your expenses?" And he said, "No." I mean, he was really blunt, he said, "No," but we knew that going in. They did it because it added to the community, that's why they did it. I just, I don't feel like this goes far enough. I, I don't feel like I've had enough time to really study it and understand it and it's, I'm struggling to do the best I can for the taxpayer to make sure the taxpayer is protected and that we do get fair value back. I like the part of this act where we can change it, that would take care of inflation, we could actually change that percent as it went along. And this is, I'll quit talking in a second. I'm looking at example of a pilot calculation that we received, a 4% pilot calculation. And this is what scares me if it went to 4%. We have a gross profit rent of $315,000. They take out of that a vacancy, less the vacancy of 5%, which is $15,000 is taken out, less utilities paid by the developer, electric, sewer and so on. The bottom line is after they adjust that income, we're down to $11,016 that we're going to receive in taxes.
I don't know what documents you're referencing.
What we received from here when we had the pilot program.
Oh, okay, from that.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, I, I'm not against that flexibility, I'm just really unsure of where we're going to go with that and I think there's more to it. I, I don't know why it didn't go before an ordinance committee to begin with. The, the other thing is that I would like to see, I would like to see a work session where we can actually sit down and discuss it and see what the best way is to move forward. That's just me. me.
Well, as to not going in front of the, the ordinance committee, that was my decision because it was just, in, what I looked at was a wording change that just provided more flexibility. And I thought in this discussion tonight would be sufficient for council to direct the city attorney to make that minor change and, and make it permissible to take something less than 10 rather than an absolute.
Yeah, and I just feel there's more, there's more options. There's, I'm finding more, more ways of, I'm learning about pilots. I'm not trying to be, not trying to be, hold up a process, but I'm just, I, I'm learning more about pilots and there's a lot of flexibility on how we do things. And I think for me to be comfortable, I need to know as much as I can about that before I make a decision. That's just me.
The thing that would make this palatable to me, if I had to evaluate a project, would be if somebody couldn't pay the 10% and they could only pay the 4, I would want a very short term. Not a 35-year term, not a 50-year term for sure. I would want something much, much shorter. In fact, I'm, I'm a little bit distressed that, you know, we're going up to 50 years. I feel that's a one-size-fits-all. I mean, this, this is a state law, but it kind of fits all the major cities in, in Michigan. It fits Detroit, it fits Grand Rapids, it fits Ann Arbor. It fits a lot of big cities that are growing and are very confident in increasing their revenues. We don't have that sense of security here. I think 35 years is too long, especially if we're talking about less than 10%. I would feel more comfortable from a negotiating standpoint if at least we tightened the range where we wanted to negotiate. I would probably say, yes, up to the 10%, but I'd want something in writing that was shorter than the 35 years.
Well, we're just mirroring state law where it's the term of the mortgage or the 35th year is what we have in and then allows to the 30th or the 50th year. So it's, it's basically saying you, you can do the term of the loan or you can go higher than that if you chose. It's not saying you have to go to 50.
I understand that, but I think it made a lot of fit all the cities and I don't want developers coming in here saying, "Well, you know, we've got this, this ordinance and this law to 50 years. Let's go for 4% 50 years term." I think that just really is not a very good negotiating point for us to start at. So I, I would like to just tighten it. That would, that's my personal opinion on what the changes need to be made here.
And that's what I was kind of going by too, is who, why would anybody choose not to do the 50 and 4%?
I, what, the, the 4, 4 to 10% needs something added to it in, in my, from my perspective. It needs to go further than that. It needs to further, like this pilot policy does or like the state law does. It allows us some flexibility on how we, how we set that up and, and able to change that payment in lieu of taxes throughout, if we went 50 years, throughout that process. The only thing I'm not clear about, and maybe the city attorney could help me with that, is when I read this, I'm not sure if, when they, when they base the, the value, if they base it on the value before the building is built or after the building is built. And I don't need the answer right now, but I'm not able to sort that out. When it talks about the, that Act 364 of 1966.
What the pilot is based on is, is shelter rents. There's a formula through MISTF that they calculate based on shelter rents and, and that's the way the pilot's calculated?
Okay, yeah, yeah. I got you. I got you. Okay.
Mr. Saylor, you made a comment about municipal services clause. Is, is, is the pilot percent in a municipal service clause, are we talking about two different issues here?
We are. Municipal services agreement is a separate document that you would enter into and be just the city and the developer to deal with the city recovering costs associated with the services that are provided to that property owner. And that's a way for municipalities at many times to recover some of that lost tax base that they have.
Because that would be a concern to me because I, I know part of our refuse collection, 50% of our refuse collection fees are, are based on a 1.25 mil assessment in our property taxes. If they're doing a pilot instead of property taxes, they're not going to be paying the 1.25 mil. They would only be paying the, the standard pickup fee. And any potential millages for a fire truck or, or anything else that came into being would sort of leave them out of the picture for that.
I think that's a very good point. That's maybe the most obvious one, but I, I would also add police services. If you have a, a larger real estate developer that's paying a pilot based on shelter rent, they may not be paying enough that covers what the police services are to those inhabitants of that property. So municipal services agreement would be intended to address those shortcomings.
That's why I was thinking that a work session would be really good to iron out all these differences and I kind of use the, I kind of keep things simple in my mind. I would like to be able to bring my utility bills and my garbage bills when I pay my taxes, bring them in and have them deduct them from the taxes. And when you pay 4%, that's just basically what you're doing. You're, you're collecting 4% of the net after they have their expenses and their, I'm sure this isn't a complete list. From what I gather, there are, there's maintenance and there's other things that they could deduct. And I guess it's audited every year. It's still a learning process for me trying to learn how all of this works. I'm just, and I want to err on the side of the taxpayer and do the best I can for them. That's...
I would just, again, just point out that, that all we're doing is allowing the council options. That, that's all it is. We can, that's all it was intended to do. So if someone came in and couldn't pay 10, you had some options. So it's one of council's platters.
Any other comments?
Can we table this to another meeting?
You can make a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table it then until we get more information about it.
I have a motion.
So motion to, your, your motion to table requires table to a specific...
To a specific meeting?
Could it be table till after a work session? The meeting following a work session?
Is that a special meeting?
A, a work session. Could it be table to?
I don't think it can be table to a work session because in the work session, you don't have the ability to make a decision. So we have to be table, this particular motion would be have to be table to a meeting at which council could make a decision on.
So could it be tabled to a, to a meeting, a regular meeting after we have a work session?
Sure.
At these work sessions though, can we change the, the terms or is that something that has to be done by a committee or staff member?
At a work session, you can't make, you know, you can't deliver a decision.
Or suggest, or what?
Yeah. That action would have to be taken at a, at a council meeting.
So you want it tabled until 21st of March?
20th.
I think it's the 20th.
20th. We have, the, the second meeting is on the 20th instead of 21st because of the Capitol Conference.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion. Councilmember Cooper to table, second by councilmember Pontiac. City clerk, please take roll.
Councilmember Pontiac?
There's no comment on the table motion.
Now we're voting for the tabling. No, yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
No.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
No, I don't think, I didn't think you did that right, but I'm going to say no on just on that.
Mayor Potem Zalinski?
No. I mean, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm on a table. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
One thing that would help, one thing that would help staff is I knew if, if you could tell me exactly what information you...
I would...
You want that now, sir? Oh, I'm sorry.
I wouldn't change the terms to 50 years. That's what I would be against. I would leave it at 35 or move it up if we go with the 4%.
It is up to 50, 50 years. That's the max.
If the 4%, the ordinance amendment didn't change, put a number in there. It just said you could go up to 10% instead of having to accept only a 10%. So...
And I think that's why we need to have a work session, sit down and get it all clear so everybody's on the same page. I would like to, if you're wanting for some input now from staff, I, I can tell you what I would like to see. I would like to see how we can incorporate that public act into this proposal so that we're making, we're not only extend, we're, we're giving the flexibility of years, extending the years, but putting in some guidelines as to how we get there and how, how we get there and, and leave some flexibility so that if we, we do stretch it out that we can increase that, that payment, that service charge, which I feel this, that this act does allow us to do that. We can change that.
Well, the service charge is negotiated after this.
But once you negotiate it, unless you have an ordinance in place, well, we're not supposed to be discussing it now because of the motion. That's why we need a work session to at least get it all in the open. Thank you.
Consideration of commercial uses permitted within the city right-of-way policy. A policy has been drafted by the DDA Design Committee to provide standards for commercial uses within the public right-of-way. The DDA reviewed and approved the drafted policy at their meeting in February 8, 2017. Policy has been designed to provide standards for properties in the downtown development authority and commercial properties outside of the DDA. This policy would expand upon and provide existing policy GP-47 sidewalk merchandise. At this time, council could take action to authorize the city manager to initiate general policy GP-47 commercial uses permitted within the city right-of-way.
I will make that motion. Second. I have a motion by councilmember Whitlam, second by councilmember Cooper. Is there any discussion?
I just want to tell the planning commission that they did a good job on this. I know it was a concern of ours and I did like the policy.
There were a lot of, I think a lot of examples out there and Denise provided some insight and, and some pretty good guidance in that. But, but I know through the process with the DDA, there was a lot of thought that went into doing something that was both beneficial to the merchants but also fair to all concerned. And I think also if I'm correct in this, the, the DDA would be responsible for monitoring within the downtown district.
Correct.
Okay.
And this will take place effectively, like right after we approve it?
After it's approved, we'll, we'll just, I'll sign it, we'll put it into effect.
Policy's different than an ordinance in that it's immediate effect, isn't it?
And what the, the nice thing about a general policy is we need to make a tweak to it for some reason, you know? We hope we got it right the first time, but chances are we're going to find some little changes we want to make. And the general policy makes it much easier to accommodate those changes in a timely fashion.
Keep going.
Now, the business owners, are they going to get mailed this new policy or are they going to get notified basically?
They'll get notified in some fashion. And we'll probably put something out on our website. We'll put something out on our, on our Facebook page. Maybe we'll get an article in the newspaper. We'll work through the DDA and see what they have in terms of distribution options.
Well, I, I appreciate all the hard work and I kind of started that process a little bit and I appreciate it. I think it'll be really beneficial to the downtown and I think it'll make it a, have kind of a cozy atmosphere in the summertime where people can just socialize and enjoy the, our downtown. So thanks for the hard work.
We had a number of comments from neighbors that were really pushing for seeing some live trees downtown. And the fact that we have planters that are allowed in this ordinance or this guideline, I think will, I think is very encouraging. I hope that we see some more greenery with it.
Any other comments? You please take roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
And councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Consideration of update, updating the city charter. Mayor Potem Zalinski has requested council consideration of requesting the city attorney and staff to review the charter document and notate areas that are no longer applicable or are superseded by state and federal law. Many areas are outdated which make it difficult for council members and public to clearly understand various requirements, causing some misinterpretations. The Home Rule Act allows communities to make nominal changes to the charter. Substantial revisions or amendments are subject to a vote of the electors. At this time, council could take action to direct city attorney and city clerk to review the city charter for areas that are no longer applicable or are superseded by state and federal law.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a couple of questions. I just think that this looks like an enormous task. I'm, I'm wondering if, just if I can ask Mr. Saylor, I, I'm sure you're so familiar with our, our charter and everything. Do you know offhand what needs to be tweaked?
Well, we, we became involved in this process to a limited extent, probably about, what, four years ago, three years ago?
Three.
And so Michelle went back and looked at some of her notes and so we've done some of the work already. I'm, my guess is that there probably are maybe as, at most a half dozen provisions that we'd be looking at, asterisked and noting that state law has superseded some provision in our charter. There won't be a lot of them, but, you know, we've already started the process, so I don't think it'll be that difficult for us to, you know, address some of what councilmember Zalinski's concerns have had.
Okay. I didn't want it to be a huge task that required hundreds of hours of study or something.
Quite frankly, the huge task would be if we decided we wanted to amend the charter to address these few things. That, that would be quite an undertaking and an expensive undertaking because of the election that would be required. So this process will be a lot simpler than that certainly.
Okay.
Any other comments? Questions? Please take roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Zalinski?
Yes.
And councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Consideration of recommendations from the Compensation Commission. Compensation for the mayor and members of city council is established based on procedures set in the charter, state statutes and local ordinance. A fundamental point in these requirements is that the mayor and council may not approve changes in their own levels of compensation. Any changes in compensation must take effect after the terms of all current council members have expired. Under established procedure, the city council may not develop compensation rates even though those rates do not become effective during the term of the council. Rates are developed by an independent compensation commission which only meets every other year. The council may accept or reject the Compensation Commission's recommendation. They may not be modified. If the council chooses to reject the recommendation, they are returned to the Compensation Commission for further consideration. Rejection can only occur if a majority of council members, which is five members, votes to reject the recommendations. If the recommendations are accepted, then they will be implemented at the beginning of the year 2019 after all current council members' terms have expired. The current salaries for the mayor and city council are $4,774 and $3,713 per year respectively. These rates have been in effect since January 2009. The Compensation Commission is recommending that these amounts be increased to $5,000 for the mayor and $3,875 for council. They are also recommending that in a 12-month period beginning after the council's organization meeting, if a council member misses more than six regular scheduled council meetings or work sessions, the council member or mayor the council member or mayor would receive a deduction of $100 for council, or $120 for meeting missed thereafter. And as I understand, Mr. Saylor, that second provision is not a legal provision.
That's my opinion. I, if, if council were to not take action to reject the recommendation, which in turn makes it approved, that part of the recommendation is not enforceable.
Okay.
Just, just a clarification, we, if we do nothing, it automatically goes into effect in 30 days.
And, and it's kind of appropriate that we were just talking about the charter provisions that are not applicable or have been superseded by law. This is one of them. Our charter provides that council members' compensation is $500 a year, and the mayor can get up to $100 more than that. Well, statute was enacted in the Home Rule City Act that said that any charter provision that predated 1972, that the city could adopt an ordinance that follows the procedure, and the statute establishes a Compensation Commission, then that would be the method by which council and the mayor's salaries are set. The ordinance that we have doesn't follow specifically the statute, and we may want to look at that at some point. The statute says that, there's no requirement that council approve what the Compensation Commission's decision was. That's what, our ordinance says that, but that's not something that's provided in the statute. The only action that's required of council is if you want to reject the Compensation Commission's decision. And if you are to reject it, it's not a majority, but it's two-thirds of the elected and serving council people that would have to vote in favor of rejecting the Compensation Commission's recommendation. So, this council could today take, make no motion, which means that the recommendation would be accepted and approved and implemented in 2019. That last provision that I mentioned to you, that they added to the recommendation, would not be part of the enforceable provisions. Or, council could take action to reject in total the recommendation of the Compensation Commission, and if you were to reject in total, it would require a motion support and a vote of five members, at least five members of council to reject.
Can we discuss this before we make a motion or not?
No, you, you have to make a motion under Robert's rules before you can begin your discussion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to reject it.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Beaton, a second by Councilmember Whitlock, to reject the Compensation Commission's recommendations. Is there any further discussion?
See, you kind of, if we, okay, if we do nothing, now we have to vote to reject it, or we have to vote to, if we vote?
We're voting to reject it, and it requires five affirmative votes on this motion in order to reject it. If you don't get five votes, it's not rejected, and you don't have to have any further motion that would be implemented.
It will take effect.
But. But then we have to go back to a meeting?
The pay raise will take effect.
But then we have to have a meeting, go back to a meeting?
No. If, if you, if you don't get five votes on this motion, and you take no other action, then it's implemented. There's no other meeting in, in January 2019, that's the compensation.
That's just the compensation, it's not, because some people, sometimes you just can't be at a meeting.
That part of it, I've always, even though that's part of their recommendation, what I'm, my opinion as city attorney is, is that that provision is not enforceable. The Compensation Commission is not able to reduce compensation, only the legislature can do that. And so, that part of the recommendation, I would suggest you, you just ignore.
Okay, that's where I'm having.
So, the only, only thing we're considering is, is whether to reject the compensation increase or to accept.
And we have a motion and a second, is it open then for discussion?
We have a sec, a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I just think any, any monies that, I know this goes in the future, 2019, but any money should stay in the budget. Any monies that we can grab for streets, we should.
I feel we're going to be asking people to, we're, we're going to be asking people to make sacrifices in all departments, to, to make sure that we have a budget that's sustainable. And I think we need to lead by example. I'm, I just think we need to lead by example, I'm not really in favor of increasing it.
Any other comments?
I don't want to take away from, from the people that worked on the Compensation Commission, I appreciate the work that they did, but, maybe, maybe it would have been helpful if they had been able to get an opinion from George Saylor before bringing this to council.
I also appreciate their work, and it's, it's not a, it's not a slam against them, I appreciate them, considering that fact. I just feel we need to lead by example, and if, that's just the way it is. It's me.
Now, question.
A vote yes is for rejection.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Any further discussion? Please take your role.
Mayor Potem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Paniac?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
To reject.
Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Board of Review, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Historic District Commission, PEG Commission, and the Parks Commission. All appointments by the mayor are subject to council's approval unless otherwise specified by statute or ordinance. Nominations for council appointment do not require a second. After a member of council nominates an individual for appointment, council shall vote on the nomination. A majority vote in favor of placement of the nominee is required for appointment. The following applications have been received. Historic District Commission. We have three vacancies, two terms ending 2/28/20, and one term ending 2/28/19. Applicants must be city residents, this is the council appointment.
I'll make a motion, we appoint Brandon T. David of 321 Second Avenue to the term limits ending, to one of the spots with term limits ending 2/28/20.
If you need a second, you have it.
No, that's a nomination, I think.
Okay. We just, yeah, let's go. Please take your role.
Councilmember Paniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cooper?
Yes. I would like to also nominate Lee Trucks of 453 Second Street to term ending 2/28/20.
You please take your role.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Paniac?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Zalinski?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
We have one more vacancy?
We have one more.
Correct.
I'd nominate Mary E. Russell, 609 Broad Avenue, for a term ending 2/28/20.
No second now.
No second required. Please take your role.
That would be the third one of 2/28/20.
Yeah.
Okay, 2/28/19, excuse me.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Paniac?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Consideration of the city representative to the countywide multi-use trail committee. On November 1, 2016, city council repealed Chapter 263, Non-Motorized Transportation Committee, after the formation of a countywide multi-use trail committee. At the January 2017 Park Commission meeting, they selected Mickey McCann, Park's lead man, as the primary representative, and Mike Quinn as the second representative to represent the city on the countywide multi-use committee. At this time, council could appoint a representative to serve on the countywide multi-use trail committee.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mayor Potem Zalinski, a second by Councilmember Paniac. Is there any discussion? Please take your role.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Paniac?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Notices, Communications, and Announcements. A report from the Public Safety Department. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. At this time, Chief David Bachman will report on the activities of the Public Safety Department and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I've asked Steve and Heath to put together a report this year. In the last 19 years, we have done a lot of different reports. We've done verbal, written, PowerPoint, we've done some really good movies, which were my favorite.
That was my favorite.
We didn't even butt bring a dog and pony in here, and we didn't bring one this year. I've asked them to give us more statistics this year rather than flash, so Steve is getting his thing ready to do, and then Heath will do his. I will say there's a couple of members on this council who have not had time to visit the police department or the fire department. I'd invite you to come in, spend some time with us, we'd like to show off what we're doing, let you, let you see the equipment that we have, and ask any questions. Sometimes, hands-on is easier for council members to really get a feel of what we're doing, particularly going into the budget. So, if you have time and want to come in, either just stop in or give me a call, we can make arrangements for anybody to be there. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. As Chief Bachman said, I'm here to prepare you guys and show you what our police department's portion of our public safety annual report is all about. As Chief Bachman stated this year, we're doing a stat-driven report. I'm going to take a look at the 2016 yearly statistics compared to our 2015. And this year, in 2016, we had 4,601 dispatch complaints compared to 4,574 dispatch complaints in 2015. We had 1,320 written complaints compared to 1,473 complaints in 2015. Traffic stops are down just a short bit there, at 1,100 compared to the 1522. Civil infractions are also down just a short bit, 308 compared to 461. We had 456 misdemeanor arrests, 546 in 2015. Our felony arrests are at 101 compared to 109, and our OWIs are at 4242. Somebody asked a question on why they're down a little bit. Some of the things that, from 2015, we worked a lot of cases, and I'll talk about here shortly, a lot of BNEs, larcenies, MDOPs, and difficult cases like that, and I'll talk about briefly in the, in the future here in the report, that we've seen a couple of different rises on some of the serious crimes. And when that happens, and we get involved in things with blight, as you asked earlier, that takes away our resources from out on the streets, as far as our patrol duties, to make sure that we handle the, the blight situations. Some of our major crimes complaints this year, when we talked about last year's annual report, we talked about we had a rash of the BNEs, the home invasion and property-related offenses in 2015. Bringing some statistics from that, five subjects were sent to prison for the home invasions in properties. Two subjects were also that were involved and were sentenced to jail for the same offenses. Just to let you know, our number-one home invasion suspect of 2015 has been arrested, is in jail, and he's scheduled for trial. In December, we investigated an assault with intent to murder complaint. That was on the North Side, that was the night of the Victorian Sleigh Bell Parade. A lot of havoc was taking place that night on the North Side. We dispatched a lot of our officers from there, from downtown to there, because it was a, it was a very serious crime. And that suspect is also being charged with child abuse first degree. One of the biggest things that we're looking at this year is, we're seeing a rise in our criminal sexual conduct complaints. In 2016, there were 24 complaints compared to 13 in 2015. Of these 24 complaints, 18 suspects have been arrested. Jason Halli takes care of our animal control. There was 29 written animal control complaints, nine dog blight complaints. Three of them were dog-to-dog bites, six dogs bit people. Four animal complaints are pending prosecution, five result in no prosecution. Pretty much each week, we usually get a call about a found dog. In 2016, we had 12 dogs were found and were taken to the animal shelter where we work great with. There were 17 misdemeanors, city ordinance citations issued, two for the unlicensed dog, two for failed rabies vaccinations, and three dogs running at large. Jason Halli spends a pretty good amount of time on this. Usually, he works, comes in at seven, and usually works until it's dark out, fielding the, the animal control complaints. Here's our blight, 2016 blight investigation. There's two major types of blight. The blighted structures and the storage of trash, building materials, rubbish, debris on property. We took 43 blight investigations. 91 tag, or red tags, are issued on junk vehicles. Each year, in the springtime and in the fall time, we usually do a roundup. And, and in that period of time, we have anywhere from 50 to 100 cars that we go out and tag. For the good majority of them, come in compliance with our city ordinance, they have to be licensed, insured, and road-ready. We do give them some latitude on that, if they tell us that they're going to get them operable to be out on the road. Sometimes, they don't follow through with what they're saying, so in 2016, we had seven vehicles were unfounded. 30 storages of trash and debris on, on property investigated. There were 13 blighted structures investigated. 22 blight notifications were sent out in the spring and summer, and out of them, 18 owners complied. When we send out the notification, usually puts the people on, on notice that they need to get that cleaned up. Sometimes, they follow through with it, sometimes we have to make a visit there. John Frost did our blight in the past, I've talked with Doug Van Sickle. Between him and myself, we're overseeing that project this year, and we're actually going to meet this week. We've met with a city attorney in the past on this, and we came up with a good, pretty good direction on where we're going to head to. In 2016, there were eight civil infractions were issued. When we issue a civil infraction, the first fine is $100 for the first offense, $500 for the second offense, and also the subsequent offenses within the 30 days of the first offense. And failure to comply if they don't pay this fine, we set up a district court hearing. Well, this is my last slide, and we'll talk about our scent narcotics team. We have an officer for our department that's on that scent team. We also have an officer from our sheriff's department. They take care of four counties, Lake, Oceana, Mason, and Manistee. Some of the other participating agencies are Luddington and Mason County. Our officer will not only work our city area, and he'll also work in the out county and also the other four, or the three other surrounding counties. He took 28 new cases generated this in 2016. 14 of the cases were closed, they are either submitted to the prosecutor's office, they really are unfounded, or their arrests were made. There was 13 felons arrested. These are individuals charged with a felony out of the 28 cases. There were 31 total felony counts, 22 just in the city of Manistee, and nine in Manistee County. There was one fugitive arrested for other warrants. A lot of times, when they go to the houses and they're, they're doing their business, they'll find somebody else in the residence that has a warrant from an outside agency. They'll do knock-and-talks, in, in 2016, they did eight. A lot of these knock-and-talks, where they'll go up to people's houses, and that's basically what it is, they knock on the door, they, they talk to the residents in there. They may follow up on some of the medical marijuana acts there to make sure they're in compliance, and they also use the knock-and-talks for investigative purposes. There were seven search warrants were conducted in, in investigations. They seized one firearm. The forfeited money was at a total of about $6,000 last year. One of the things that we brought to you last year was our home invasion armed robbery on Ramsdale Street, which involved the manufact- which involved the manufacture of meth, delivery of controlled substances, and possession of firearms. The owner, the female suspect in that, has been sentenced to prison for 32 months and up to 15 years. And also, the suspect in the armed robbery was also sentenced to prison. Any questions?
We probably aren't allowed to ask you about anything that's ongoing, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Good question, though.
I wanted to try, then I thought I would.
Call Chief Bachman.
Okay.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I did have one question, though. Sorry. In general, how many calls do you get to the schools? Because I know we don't have a person for the schools anymore.
That is correct. We don't have a resource officer, but usually during our day shift. I would say on an average of, within a month, we probably will receive three to four calls. There are officers, including myself, that do walkthroughs of the schools. Myself and Officer Pethly, we were born and raised here, so we went to these schools. So we have some ties to the teachers there and to the principals. They'll call us personally. A lot of times, we'll respond to the schools. Most of the time, it involves just talking with the kids. They do have counselors on-site and stuff like we had when we were in school. But sometimes, they want that outside influence, and so we'll go up there and talk with them. Like I said, some of the criminal sexual conduct complaints are on the rise. Some of them are fielded from the school when they go in and talk with the counselors, so we'll go up there. But on the average, probably out of a month, I would say probably a good estimate would be about four, maybe five.
And do we get training? Do they get training for the lockdown? I know that's new.
For our lockdowns?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. There's probably four times a year we do training for lockdowns. And basically, what we'll do is we'll take care of all the MAPS schools, and then we'll also assist on the surrounding areas that we would respond to if there was a situation, such as Madison.
I have just a follow-up question. Do you ever get any calls from MCC?
We do get calls from MCC. A lot of the times that they'll, what they do there is they take care of a lot of things in-house, but they'll call us. MCC is probably not one of the schools that call a lot, but we have went there in the past.
Okay, I was just curious.
Absolutely. Clear? Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, Council. I'd like to give you a quick rundown of what 2016 looked like at the City Fire Department, and a little bit about our mission, just to emphasize that to anybody who might not quite be clear on what we do. Obviously, first and foremost, fire suppression for the city. As in addition to emergency medical service and the form of advanced life support, we also provide ice and water rescue, confined space rescue. We plan for fire suppression strategies, conduct fire safety inspections, fire safety education, and we maintain to the best of our ability our own fleet. Our fleet consists of the following. On the suppression side of things, Ladder 651, our aerial truck with a pump capacity of 2,000 gallons a minute. Engine 652, 2004 Pierce pumper with a capacity of 1,250 gallons a minute. On the EMS side of things, we've got Medic 5, our primary ambulance, is 2012. Braun ambulance and Rescue 5 is our secondary ambulance and rescue truck, 2002 Mark Ford ambulance. They're both licensed by the state of Michigan to provide advanced life support, and they're equipped for that purpose. And in a support role, Truck 654, which I'm sure you guys are familiar with by now, as the new one is being built as we speak. I hope to see it here within the next two weeks, probably. But it's used multi-use. The guys use it for building inspections, hydrant maintenance, fire prevention programs. It'll be used to tow the new fire education trailer when it arrives. Also, rescue. It's licensed by the state of Michigan, has a basic life support, non-transport vehicle, and is equipped for that. And it can also be used as a command vehicle. Couple of events that we have done in the past year and ongoing year after year in open house during Fire Prevention Week, and that usually brings in anywhere between 100 and 300 guests to see the equipment, kind of get a feel for what we do, have some refreshments while they're there. Our ladder truck typically is displayed down at Red Park during the Art and Craft Fair. And we do additional fire EMS standbys, kind of behind the scenes when things are going on in the city, such as the Forest Festival Parade and the fireworks shows, and the Sleigh Bell Parade and fireworks shows. We've usually got additional staff waiting in the wings, if you will, for anything that might arise. And we also take part in tight lanes for troops every year, where we provide medical standby and assistance with moving disabled veterans as they prepare to go out for the fishing tournament. And you've probably noticed in years past, we usually hang the flag from our ladder truck at the Coast Guard Station over the river for their return home. And public education, we do a lot of educating the public in general. We've got over 250 hours logged in 2016 for public education to the various community groups. We do see all the schoolchildren in MAPS schools from kindergarten through sixth grade. We do programs for senior citizens, police officers, and business and manufacturing for topics anywhere between fire safety, health, CPR, and even fire extinguisher training. We try to accommodate any requests that come in to us for educating the public. Professional training, we like to get it as much as we give it. And we've had firefighters trained in the last year in various conferences and seminars or formal classes here in Manistee, Traverse City, the big international trade show in Indianapolis, the National Fire Academy in Evansburg, Maryland. And of course, we train locally on and off shift. This is just an example of some of the training we did early last summer, utilizing water sources other than the municipal water supply. As robust as it is, we need to be prepared for any type of failure or the need to provide water from a different source should we go outside of the city. This is just an example of that. And aerial ladder training is done pretty frequently, too, in the summer. And this is kind of an example of what some of the guys do for on-duty training. Just another example, practicing rescuing each other, and different techniques for dragging. On the EMS side, as advanced life support paramedics now, there's a little bit of extra training that goes along with that. PHTLS is pre-hospital trauma life support, is exactly how it sounds. Learning and treating different types of traumatic injuries from blunt force injuries and burns to injuries you might encounter in an explosion, just about anything traumatic. And advanced cardiac life support. We constantly have to brush up on rhythm identification, electrical therapy, and pharmacologic therapy. It's kind of the cornerstone of advanced life support is advanced cardiac life support. So some statistics for you. For 2016, these are broke down quite a bit. But fires, generally speaking, there were 21 fires for 2016, and those get broke down quite a bit. Under structural fires, you see 10. You may not remember 10 houses catching on fire throughout 2016, but indeed, they either caught fire or had a fire within them. And that gets further broken down to whether that fire was contained or uncontained. The fact of the matter is, there were 10 fires within structures, 11 fires outside of structures. EMS calls 884 emergency requests for service. 26 hazardous responses. Those could be anything from gas leaks to live wires down or arcing wires, that sort of thing. False alarms are just that, not necessarily the failure of an alarm. Perhaps, an alarm went off as it was intended, but as a result of an accident such as dust in the air or cooking. And other types of calls, 196. In parentheses, you'll see those handle are good intent calls. People maybe thought there was an emergency, there wasn't. Lift assists, transfers, those sort of things. And those kind of peel out of the EMS number there largely because most of them generate with an EMS type of complaint. And mutually, four fires we were called outside of the city to assist with, and 49 EMS calls outside of the city we were called to assist with. Totaling for 2016, 1,206 runs. And those break down quite a bit. I do an NFPA report every year, and they have a lot of stakeholders that gather a ton of data that shows us as a nation why we're having fires, how to prevent them, and those sort of things. So of these 1,206 calls that we ran, there were actually 45 different incident types. There's many more than that, but, so that's kind of a unique figure there to know that the number of different types of incidents we actually respond to. Just a snapshot of the last decade of run totals. So we're coming down a little bit over the last two years, but a very little bit. And with fires, fires are still kind of average. They're very random, they're not predictable. There's no rhyme or reason. As you can see, they're up and down. And they're broken down again by structural and all other types of fires, which would include grass fires or car fires or any other type of mobile property, anything not involving a structure. On the EMS side of that 884 runs that we made, you might be interested to know, you know, what do we do with those? Well, 86% of them do get transported to the hospital. 12% are not transported. Perhaps, they fell, they weren't sure if they were hurt or not. They get an evaluation by us, and maybe we talk to other family members or the physician in the emergency room and determine whether or not they really do need to go to the hospital or want to go to the hospital. About 12% are not transported, and 2% are actually treated on the scene and then opt to either find a different means to the hospital or perhaps they don't need it at all. A common occurrence that would fit in that 2% is probably a diabetic, low blood sugar. They're usually virtually unconscious when we arrive, but we're able to start an IV for them, give them dextrose through their IV. It brings their sugars quite back up to normal. They're completely alert and oriented and conscious again. And usually, if that's a common or semi-common occurrence for them, the emergency room physician is fine with them staying home, eating some real food, and managing their sugar a little bit better. So that's the type of thing that can make up that 2%. Now, that's about it for 2016 and the brief snapshot of the decade leading up to. Are there any questions?
I have one.
Yeah.
Water rescue.
Water rescue?
Do we have a boat? Do we have?
We do not have a boat. In the event of an incident out in open water, we coordinate with the Coast Guard and the Sheriff's Department.
Do we have any type of water rescue equipment, like throw rings or?
We do have throw bags and life preservers.
Next question would be ongoing training. Firefighter, I'm just curious, how much ongoing training do they require?
There are a host of topics that are required annually or as needed. So most of those things are done usually in the spring through the fall. We have some programs that we run that exercise multi-facets of those required trainings. They include anything from ladder evolutions to search and rescue to SCBA work, hose streams.
So I guess I was getting to the certification. Do they have to require training every year to maintain the certification?
No.
Okay. The other thing, how's the trailer going?
The trailer, from what I understand, the trailer's due to be ready here within probably the next two weeks.
Probably, we should tell them what we're talking about when we talk about the trailer.
The fire education, the fire education trailer that was funded by local revenue sharing. Yeah, it's built. Last time I spoke to them, late last week, they were waiting on a window that was going to be installed in it, a residential-type window.
So the council members get to have a trial to see if we pass or not?
You bet. You bet.
Thank you.
It's a small bed, though.
Yeah, it's actually set up to, it will be set up to look like a bedroom. So children will be taught how to escape if they hear a fire alarm or see smoke, and check the door for heat, and find more than one way out of the room and all of that.
I'm pretty excited about seeing that in operation. That's going to be.
It'll be a nice tool that we have not had for a long time here.
Are you hoping to get it used this year or next school year?
It will more than likely begin use this year. Because we're in and out of the schools almost the entire school year. To see that whole kindergarten through sixth grade, it's a pretty regular process for the guy that handles it.
Thank you.
Yeah, hey, one more question. Do we have like a rainy for insurance because we have a full-time department?
I'm sorry, what was the first part of that?
Is our insurance rating, because my insurance adjuster, or my insurance agent.
Yeah, ISO rating?
Yes.
Yeah. That is, they check for ISO. I think they're supposed to do it every 10 years, but it had been over 20 years since our last one was done. And we just had it done last year or the year before. Yeah, almost two years ago. And I think we came down one point, which is pretty negligible as far as insurance goes.
So having the full-time fire department keeps us, our insurance rate, that's what my insurance agent said.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
We improved our rating this year because we could put more firefighters at the scene on initial call when we combine with automatic muslammation fighter township and when we train police officers and firefighters, so we can get quite a bit more firefighting capacity at the scene of the fire initially, which brought more water capacity, plus more manpower, so it changed our rating. And it was, I'm not sure the number, but it went by a one-point difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Concerns and comments. Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance will be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Are there any citizens that wish to make comment?
Officials and staff.
Just read my letter, counsel, that I will be out of state. We meet tomorrow, and be back on the second. And I'll be available by cell phone, monitoring my emails. And if you need something that requires immediate attention, get a hold of Chief Bachman.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public safety.
Don't worry, I'm ready.
Public works.
Public works.
My staff and I would really like to thank council for the wonderful weather that you've brought to us this year. Um, it's given us a lot of opportunities to get caught up on projects that have been shelved or pushed back. Um, one of the things that we did Sunday was post an update on Facebook about the run water. We are, even though we've got warm temperatures on the surface, there's still frost on the ground. We're evaluating that, uh, each day. Yesterday, the guys checked the ground when the water services were put into edgewater, or to, uh, Chippewa cottages. Uh, this week, they're gonna be tying in some utility services to edgewater, so we're kind of checking the frost on the ground to see where that's at. But we want the residents to keep running the water until we determine that it's safe and doesn't put, put their, um, water services in jeopardy of freezing.
These are the ones that you've sent notices to that you're referring to?
Correct. Yeah, it's not a citywide thing, just the one that we've got on our annual list. And then, uh, due to the weather, we're gonna bring our night shift back, um, starting on Monday, and just get a jump on normally the things that we do in the spring and be able to increase our capacity this summer, so. That was it.
Hey, Jeff, all right, with, with the warm weather now, are we gonna be, you doing anything with the skating rink? You know, taking it down early or, you know, prevent damage?
If it, if it thaws and it's not usable, um, it's gotta be completely thawed before we can drain it out. Uh, but when it gets to that point, yeah, and we'll have all the resources together now with the guys together, so. But you never know. I mean, it's still early. Um, it's getting wet. It's, it hasn't been a great year for it. We get thaws, then we get a freeze, then we get thaws, and it hasn't been a great surface to skate on, but.
It's not open right now, right?
I believe it's pretty wet right now, yeah.
Scuba training?
We could do that, ice water rescue. Thank you.
Thank you. Sit in, DeNarian.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Just, just an observation, um, probably to Jeff, I guess. The, the fence down at the First Street Beach, uh, not First Street Beach, but the First Street bolt ramp where you turn in, there's that metal fence, and that, there's a generator there. Is there something we could maybe, this nice weather made me think of, I was walking the dog, that it's kind of like, we, we plant a tree or, or something around that to kind of make that look a little nicer? And that, that fence has been like that for a couple of years. It's kind of rusting apart. If you could get paint on it some way.
Right, and the fence was, was what's left over from the old bathroom structure that was there. Um, this summer, we actually got prices to repaint that. Um, I don't feel that the expense, uh, i- is worth it. So I was looking at the same thing this week and thought, we're probably just gonna remove that. The lift station, we've looked at several different options to actually, we priced out to put fencing around that. We've also looked at doing some different landscaping, uh, to try to hide it and protect it. Um, and we can look at some shrubbery and stuff like that, but, um, one of the big things is, it, it's not a pretty thing, but we also need to have access to it and get the trucks close.
It's true, you're on top of it. I just wanted to, to, just to, it, it just sticks out, just like a sore thumb.
And the fence, I agree with you. Uh, it was almost, I think it was like eighteen hundred dollars to paint that section of fence to electric paint it. I don't think it's worth it.
Thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor. Have fun, Ted.
Well, thank you.
Uh, I just want to remind everybody that, uh, this weekend from ten to two is the open house at the Armory, Armory Project, so please, uh, go down and.
Thank you.
You just, uh, you reminded me with, um, Jeff's up here. On my way here, there was a street light out on the corner of Twelfth and Ramsdale, if you could check into that. Huh? Oh, okay. Yeah. It's been out a couple, or probably a couple of months now. Um, and then I just wanted to, um, congratulate the DDA on a good weekend with the chili cook-off. I was down there with my Girl Scouts, and it was great weather and a lot of people come out, so, great job doing that.
Uh, I would like to congratulate Public Safety Department Chief, good job. The Deputy Chief Darling and, uh, Steve, Sergeant Smelling, thank you for your presentations. The, uh, two standout departments in, in Public Works is, is no less in my estimation for contribution to the city than any other department, Jeff, uh, that just happened to do the presentation tonight. Uh, city staff, thank you for the preparation. It was an aggressive agenda tonight, a lot of things to go through. But, uh, well received, and thanks to all that, uh, have appeared to witness what we do here in city council. Uh, thank you to Mark, uh, Councilmember Whitler, for being the first of the council member guinea pigs to appear with the council on aging, um, and that would be a monthly feature, uh, over there. We get everybody rotated in, uh, an opportunity to meet with, uh, council, uh, members of, uh, over there and, uh, listen to their concerns and, uh, and, and actually get to meet some of those, uh, fine citizens that we have in, in town. But Mr. Taylor, have a wonderful trip. Safe journey. Hit some golf balls for him if the weather's good. With that, uh, motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.